Kathy Pucci.
Here.
Mary Bellbeer.
Here.
Kevin Tansky.
Here.
Andy Selhertz.
Here.
Katie Gallagher.
Here. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, we're going to start this meeting off with two presentations. First, I'd like to invite Doug Up from Polaris Career Center to speak about the levy. Yes?
Thank you very much for having me here this evening. Council, Mayor, city administrators, residents, thank you very much for your attention. My name is Doug Miller. I'm the Director of Community Outreach at Polaris Career Center. We're really excited that we are actually celebrating our 40th anniversary this year. We opened our doors in 1975. We've been serving adult education students and high school students since our doors opened. We actually brought Brooklyn into the fold in the late 90s and have been doing really wonderful things with the City of Brooklyn and Brooklyn City School students. Currently, we serve almost 1,000 high school students from six local school districts, six high schools, Brooklyn being one of them. We also serve over 8,000 adult education students. Many of those folks actually also come from the City of Brooklyn as well. And then we have a relatively new venture. We call them satellite programs. They're at both the middle school and high school level. And we serve about 1,900 students in those programs. They have literally exploded over the last seven or eight years. We actually have a pre-engineering program and a teaching professions program right here at the high school. Those are actually our programs, our teachers, our equipment and technology that's in that classroom. And essentially what we're able to do is bring our services right here into your community and offer career technical training right here in your school building so that your students can benefit from Polaris, even if they decide not to attend our campus in Middleburg Heights. Of all the students that we serve, about 190 of them come from Brooklyn High School. We're really happy to say that Brooklyn, when you look at a breakdown of all our high schools in terms of percentages of students served, Brooklyn by far sends the highest majority of their students to Polaris, and we're really, really excited and happy to say that. At one time, it was close to 50% of juniors and seniors in the Brooklyn High School senior class and junior class attended Polaris. It's just shy of that now, but we're just really excited about where we're headed. I mentioned it's our 40th anniversary. And for those of you that haven't been to Polaris in a while or you haven't seen all the great things that we're doing, certainly I invite you to our facility on Wednesday night. It's our annual open house. We'll be open from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m., so if you want to see all the great things we're doing and if you want to interact with a lot of really great students, I encourage you to come out and see us. Another reason why I'm here to talk to you folks tonight is to let you know that for the first time since 1984, last time I counted, that's 31 years, we're actually going to be on the ballot seeking passage of a 0.69 permanent improvement levy. We've got a 40-year-old facility. In traditional school years, that's really not that big a deal, but as a career technical school, as a career technical environment, where we've got to have one foot in the education community and the other foot in the business community, it's important for us to be sure that our technology and equipment is up to date and meeting the needs of our business community. And we're in a place where we've got literally labs that are 40 years old and in some instances, some equipment that's 40 years old. And we've really stretched those dollars and stretched those resources to the point where it is time for us to do a top-to-bottom improvement of our facility, starting with labs, technology, and equipment. So what that 0.69 mil levy equates to is about $2.01 a month on a $100,000 home. So we're on the ballot. It's Issue 6 next Tuesday. We encourage you to get out and vote, and we would certainly appreciate your support. And thank you, and have a great evening.
Thank you. Chief Zemec, do you want to come up to the podium?
Thank you, Council President and members of council. I met with a gentleman, John Garris, from the Red Cross, our local chapter. For 22 years, John, if you want to come on up, for 22 years, the Red Cross has been providing through monies only with the City of Cleveland, smoke detectors to their residents. And not only providing us smoke detectors, but going around and knocking on doors, doing kind of a neighborhood walk, knock on doors. If they don't have a detector, they actually mount them. He has volunteers that are just biting at the bit to help him out from some of our larger companies. And so John and I met, and the American Red Cross, and John, correct me if I'm wrong, but there's been some new monies. So he reached out to the inner ring suburbs, and Brooklyn being the first one that he's reached out to. And this is a win-win situation. If I can get a detector in every home, then I think we can kind of rest easy that fatalities will be down in the City of Brooklyn. There have been 110 deaths in the State of Ohio this year from fire and smoke related, and all those had have had neither no smoke detector or non-working detector. So the Fire Marshals put out a big campaign called Safe and Sound, but I want to see Brooklyn ahead of the, you know, ahead of the game and get these detectors going. So we're going to start on November 7th, and I'll let John talk, and he's got some information to pass out to you folks. November 7th, Saturday, we're going to target the neighborhood from North Amber, east to Ridge, and then from Memphis in that block north to our residential line there. Talking with the mayor and the acting safety director, he informed me that those are older homes, more wood-framed versus the brick. So we'd like to target that neighborhood first, so that's what we're going to be doing. John, if you could come on up and finish, and I can pass those on.
Yeah, thanks, sir. Thanks.
Thank you, Chief. As Chief Zemec did mention, we did meet about a week ago. And the program that we're going to try to do here in Brooklyn is a program we've had in the City of Cleveland for about 22 years, as he had mentioned. It's our Operation Save a Life. And how this whole program came about is back in the early 90s, we had a lot of fatalities due to fire. The average fatality rate due to fire in homes in Cleveland was 48, average, over about a 50-year period. In the 22 years-plus that we've done Operation Save a Life with the American Red Cross, working with several of the fire departments, Cleveland Fire, Cleveland Heights, South Euclid, and Euclid, we've installed over 152,000 alarms in homes in Cleveland. The fatality rate the last two years in the City of Cleveland are single digits. Our goal, obviously, every year is zero fatalities. That's something we shoot at every year. We have been doing it, so we've been successful. The significance of, as Chief Zemec did mention, we had some additional funding become available. We had a best practice with our organization through the Red Cross, and they've been very aware of the success of our program here in Cleveland, and it's used as the earmark for our national program. So you may have seen something through the state Fire Marshals, through different fire channels and so forth, that the Red Cross nationally has become one of our core services, installing smoke alarms. We don't give them out because statistics show 80% of the alarms that are just handed to somebody never get in. You also have heard the statistics that 50% of the alarms in homes currently don't work. And so what our Operation Save a Life program does on a national level is not only install alarms, but it's the education facet of it. And I would be remiss to say that the fatality rate in the City of Cleveland dropped just because we're putting alarms in. But when we go in and putting alarms in the correct places with partners like the fire departments, but we're also educating the homeowners to test alarms nightly, how many of us do that? You know, do we change batteries on a regular basis as prescribed by the manufacturers? So we're not just installing alarms, but we're educating people of how not to be a victim in the first place and how to maintain the equipment. So this national program that we've unveiled about a year ago now, our goal here in northeast Ohio is to install 10,000 alarms in homes. We're about 4,000 right now, and our deadline, obviously, is next June. We're in a fiscal year, July to June. Through that process, we hope that the national goal is to reduce the fatality rate due to house fire by 25% over the next five years, which means we're going to be installing anywhere from 2 to 3 million alarms over that period in homes throughout the country. It's lofty. We have gotten some grants through FEMA and some other national organizations, and they've made it available so that we can expand our Operation Save a Life that started here in our neighborhoods to some of the suburbs. And we've already, obviously, talked to Chief Zemec. We also talked to Parma, Maple Heights, we're going to be talking to North Royalton, and another city. But there's a number of cities that are jumping on board, and in the past, we've not been able to expand it out to the suburbs because of it was grant restricted within the city limits. And now that we've gotten these alarms from our national headquarters that we can distribute, we're able to reach out, and this is our first effort to try to target areas, not just indiscriminately give them, put them in homes that just go door-to-door. We're targeting, we have enough tools available, we did talk with Chief Zemec, we're targeting areas that have a high propensity of fire, older neighborhoods, lower-income elderly. Those are the homes that we're targeting in each of these communities, so we're not just giving them away. We're trying to be strategic with it because we are limited how many we have, but we are being strategic of who we're, where we're going and how we're doing that. So we appreciate Chief Zemec and his folks for partnering with us. We hope this will be an ongoing effort in that, you know, the ultimate goal for this is to save lives. And we're not passing a levy.
Thank you, John. Thank you, John. Thank Chief Zemec.
May I ask a question?
Sure.
Absolutely.
The type of detectors that you're installing, are they the ones with the lithium batteries that you don't have?
Ten-year. Yes. They're 10-year alarms. As Chief Zemec could probably address it better than I can, my experience that most of the alarms that fail are because of the batteries.
Right.
The equipment that we're installing are lithium, 10-year lithium batteries. They're sealed units, so you can't change the batteries unless you break that equipment, then it's...
You cannot take the battery out.
Right. Yep. You would break the unit. So it's a 10-year alarm battery, which is really helpful for seniors. We see it all the time because if you have an alarm on the ceiling, it's great, but, you know, if you have to change the battery every six months, if you can't get on the ladder, it's not so great. So with these, the beauty of it, you still have to test it monthly, and we advocate that, and we train the residents that we do install these in, but the beauty of it is the alarm's not going to fail for 10 years. And at the end of the 10 years, the whole unit gets thrown out and you replace it. But any alarm right now, if you had hardware, a lot of people don't realize that, your alarms are going to fail in 10 years because the sensors wear out. So if you haven't done anything else, look at your alarms on the back of it 10 years from that manufacturer date, that unit probably doesn't work.
And will the city have the information as to the addresses where you're installing them so that we're going to know in 10 years?
What we're doing, what we're targeting is, as the chief mentioned, we're going to target several streets.
Right.
We're going to canvass ahead of time, letting people know we're coming and what we're doing so they don't get scared when they see the Red Cross and, you know, the fire department and whatnot. And we will make that available for the chief. Yeah, that's not a problem with it.
Thank you.
Yeah, our intention is to, you know, like I said, it's to save lives. It's part of our national goal and something we've been doing here in the Cleveland area for a long time, which we're very proud of.
Thank you.
And in packets that were distributed is a copy of our best practices that our national headquarters recognized us as, so...
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Just to remind everybody, November 1st is daylight savings time, and it's always a good day to remember to test your alarms. It's one of those days that, you know, throughout, get a new toothbrush, test your fire alarms. We'll now proceed with our regular council meeting. Council was informed by our service director that there was a public records request for qualifications for professional design services for a needs assessment of the seven city facilities, and it was placed in the Plain Dealer on October 13th. They received eight firms that submitted qualification statements, and the service director and engineer will review these soon. Tonight on the agenda, we have a request for a change order relating to landfill closure. The total amount of the change is $33,374.62. This is to repair a liche outbreak, a fence repair caused by fallen trees, equipment gate, and compost pond fence. We have a resolution approving the application of the City of Brooklyn to upgrade the 2006 master plan using the community development block grant funds. The estimated cost for this plan is $56,700. This will be an emergency tonight. A resolution accepting the improvement target areas as designated by the county, approving the application for upgrading the City of Brooklyn's parks and recreation areas to be funded under the community development block grant program. The total cost of this work is $213,120, and the amount requested for the grant is $150,000. This will include work on Wrigley and Fenway Fields, and include a new backstop, fence, infield, general leveling, regrading, aeration, seeding, fertilization, and work on the outfield, also a new LED scoreboard, a possible storage garage, and also work at Memorial One Field. Same things, new backstop, first and third base fencing. The completion of the work, if awarded the grant, would be May 1st, 2016. We have a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter an agreement with James Zepka to help prepare the comprehensive annual financial report for 2015, 2016, and 2017. The cost for 2015 is $17,290. 16 would be $16,560, and 2017, $16,275. A resolution authorized the mayor to enter into contract with the District Board of Health, Kegel County, for health services in 2016 for a total amount of $43,782. This is the same price from 2014 and 15. These are health services mandated under Chapter 3709 of the Ohio Revised Code. We have an ordinance enacting a new Section 549 possessing certain weapons in public places. This is on third reading and will be up for pass adoption tonight. An ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into agreement with Juvenile Diversion Coordinator Lou Glizio to perform duties in 2016 and 17. This allows the city to pay Mr. Glizio $500 a month, up to a maximum of $18,000 per year. Juvenile court reimburses the city $12,000 per year for this position. Ordinance to adopt new Chapter 182 income tax, January 1st, 2016, of the codified ordinances. In December of 2015, House Bill 5 was passed in the General Assembly requiring certain municipal income tax mandates to be enacted by January 1st of 2016. An ordinance amending non-bargaining, adding senior part-time employees from ordinances 2015, '44, '45, '46, and '47. This was discussed in finance. We are going to eliminate this because these are contract positions, but we will add in the part-time law enforcement clerk from Ordinance 61 of this year. This just indicates that these positions are not eligible for overtime, comp time, healthcare, sick, or vacation time. We have an ordinance authorizing the sale of certain city-owned vehicles through Greater Cleveland Auto Auction. This includes a 2000 Salts truck, a mechanic's truck, and a 1994 recreation pickup truck. An ordinance accepting the medical insurance renewal from Medical Mutual of Ohio from December 1st to 2015 to November 30th, 2016. The total annual premium is $1,548,663. This is $483 less than last year, so that's good news. At this time, we'll hold public session. If anyone has anything for the good and welfare of the City of Brooklyn, please come on up and state your name, address, including city, and keep your comments to five minutes or less.
My name is Lou Changary. I live at 8972 Trail Run Drive, Brooklyn, Ohio. I'm up here, something that's kind of near and dear to my heart, and that's your right to vote. Remember to mark your calendar. Next Tuesday, November 3rd is Election Day. Use your constitutional right to vote. By the way, don't cost you nothing. It's free. Only costs you a couple of minutes of your time. This is the time that John and Jane citizen get to elect the candidate of your choice, the one you feel will represent you. Remember, one vote, your vote, can make a huge difference to Brooklyn and the State of Ohio. Remember, if you don't vote, then you can't complain about what's going on. I wish good luck to all the candidates who are running and to all the issues on the ballot. Now, I would like to remind everybody that next Saturday evening is Halloween. And please watch out for all the ghosts, robbers, and costume kids, as it's going to be dark. And as you know, when it comes to getting a treat, they forget little things like don't run across the street. So I'm asking everybody to please remember that they are kids, your kids, your grandkids. So let's keep our eyes open so we don't hurt anybody. It's kind of hard eating candy when you're in the hospital. Now, this one is near and dear to my heart in the fact that being a school guard, and since I've gone back to work, I want to remind to all of the drivers out there who they think that they have the right to turn right on red even when the crossing guards are in the crosswalk, you don't. The "walk" and "don't walk" signs, you know the little ones that are orange and white? Do not control the intersection. They control about how much time you get to go across the street. They do not control the intersection. The traffic signal, you know the ones that are red and green, are the ones that tell you when you can turn and you can't turn. I know. The state law says, and until the crossing guard is out of the intersection, the crosswalk. If I'm on this side of the street and you're going to make a right turn on that side of the street, you better wait till we get out. And that's not a city law, that's a state law. And then remember that the crossing guards are there to protect your children, your grandchildren, and we also like to take care of people who are senior citizens, namely people like me. And one more thing, we have a law in this city, it's in the state, and I know it's in the country. Please get off your cell phones. Now, when I am up there and I am crossing kids, we, as crossing guards, see people who are driving, they come to a stop, and they say, "Oh, well, I'm not driving, my car's not moving." And then they start talking and they start texting. Then the light changes, or the light don't change, they look up and they say, "Oh, man," and they step on the gas. I mean, I'd like to see everyone who gets caught get fined $200 or $300 so it makes them wake up to the fact that you can kill somebody. Thank you. See you on Election Day.
Thank you, Lou. Does anyone else have anything for the good and welfare of the City of Brooklyn?
Good evening. My name's James Bradley, 4468 Tiedemann Road, Brooklyn, Ohio. I did bring my oldest son with me to observe the city council meeting tonight. He's also Brooklyn Middle School 6th grade student of the month. On October 15th of this year, my wife, Mandy, was involved in an accident at the intersection of Tiedemann, a bit off-road, where she was injured, and the vehicle she was driving was totaled. A minivan that was traveling north on Tiedemann ran the red light, striking her vehicle in the intersection as she began to safely clear after the light turned red. At the same time, a large black SUV that was behind her, also waiting to turn left on a bit off, following her, rear-ended her after her motion was impeded by the colliding minivan. Brooklyn Police Officers, Officer Rice and Baxter responded to the scene. Officer Baxter attended to the driver and passenger of the minivan, and Officer Rice attended to my wife and the driver of the SUV. The driver of the SUV, as well as my wife, stated that the light was red and attempted to clear the intersection after waiting there on the green light. The SUV driver also admitted to striking her in the rear end of the vehicle. I sent an email to Chief Milkie addressing the concerns to the accident that I raised after learning my wife was not given the opportunity to provide a written statement at the scene. He then replied that our concerns would be forwarded to the sergeant in charge. Sergeant Eschweiler did contact us via email when the report was ready. My wife and I then spoke to her on the phone as she stated my wife turned on yellow, which contradicts the truth that she stated, and also that the black SUV that rear-ended her, his information was missing from the police report. I emailed Chief Milkie notifying him that my wife would be in to provide a written statement to the accident. After questioning Sergeant Eschweiler as to the missing information, she indicated that Officer Rice did not write the report and that Officer Baxter wrote the report. My wife then submitted her statement. Officer Baxter at no time made contact with my wife to obtain a statement. And the information that Officer Rice has is little to none, as he states that he apparently lost or forgot to write down the driver's information of the SUV. After taking, after talking with Officer Rice on the phone, he stated that it was a very hectic time for the department. I assumed that he was talking about the robbery and shooting that occurred on Interstate 480 at the same time. Sergeant Eschweiler stated that Brooklyn Police have been attempting to locate the driver of the SUV, but have been unsuccessful. Due to Officer Rice allowing a witness, as well as the vehicle that was involved in the accident, to leave the scene without obtaining their information, dumbfounds us. And the response that we received from Chief Milkie is, "Good luck with it." Officer Rice is now claiming no recollection of the statements made at the scene because he was preoccupied with the shooting that was taking place on Interstate 480. I also notified Council Member Ron Van Kirk of the situation since the beginning. We are here because we have in our possession two incomplete police reports for the same accident. One was modified, and both of them are protecting Officer Rice. Currently, we have more than enough evidence that Officer Rice let the driver of the SUV go, who was the witness and was involved in the accident, without obtaining his information. I do say that we will not be needing luck, as I will be forwarding all my information to the Attorney General's office in regards to this accident. We currently are borrowing our pastor's vehicle until proper representation of the facts are made to our insurance company so that a replacement vehicle can be found. Thankfully, I would like to say that my wife is okay from the accident. She is a little banged up and not feeling well, but as a former police officer myself in Medina County, I was a little upset, obviously, that I feel that we've been getting the runaround, and obviously, we have two police reports that obviously are incomplete and incorrect, and we would like a third one generated with the truth of the facts. Thank you.
Mr. Bradley? Just one quick question. There's typically not a back and forth, but let me just ask you, did EMS respond?
I did talk to my wife on the phone, and she was going to go to the hospital, but the dispatcher, which I think now goes through Parma, could not. She was on her way to pick up our kids at the middle school at the time. And I talked to the dispatcher, and they attempted to call the school, but were unable to get through so that they could hold our children. And so she went with our kids in mind to pick up the kids, and then she did go to the emergency room afterwards. There was a...
I'm just trying to figure out if there's EMS reports on this.
There is one EMS report for the passenger of the minivan. For the passenger of the minivan.
You said it was 10:15?
It was the date of the accident.
Yes.
It was 10:15 at 2:20 in the afternoon.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Does anyone else have anything for the good and welfare of the City of Brooklyn? Does anyone else have anything for the good and welfare of the City of Brooklyn? Okay, we will now move on to reports of committees, commissions, and boards. And first up is our Finance Committee Chair, Councilwoman Pucci.
Good evening. The Finance Committee met earlier this evening at 6:00 PM. We had a lengthy presentation regarding our electricity contract from Mr. Scott Rafferty of North Shore Energy. Our contract for the Rec Center expires in February, and because the rates are historically low right now, he's making a recommendation that we enter into a contract now at a lower price to, that would be in effect once our contract expires in February. So we'll be looking at this the next couple of weeks and speaking with our Finance Director, and we will anticipate legislation at our next meeting. Ms. Gallagher already read most of the items that we addressed in our Finance Committee meeting. The One Ordinance 2015-38, providing for the compensation for the part-time, full-time, and administrative employees, as she mentioned, we're going to be amending that, and that'll be on first reading. The Ordinance 2015-63, authorizing the three additional vehicles that we're going to sell at auction, that'll also be on first reading. And 2015-64, our medical insurance for 2016, that'll be on first reading this evening, and then we'll pass by emergency at the next meeting because that is effective December 1st. We also received a packet of information from our Finance Director for us to review in anticipation of starting our budget process for 2016. So thank you for that. I'm sure we're all going to renew it or review it. I think that completes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is our Recreation Board Chair, Councilwoman Tansky.
Thank you. My report's a little lengthy, so just bear with me. The Brooklyn Recreation Department will host the Hallow Scream Skate Night on Friday, October 30th, from 8:00 PM till 9:15 PM. The admission for this fun event is free to all current Brooklyn resident ID holders wearing a costume and donating a Thanksgiving-related canned good for the City of Brooklyn Thanksgiving Basket. Non-residents will be admitted for resident rates, $1 admission, if wearing a costume and donating a Thanksgiving-related canned good for the holiday basket. All other skaters not wearing a costume will be admitted for regular admission rates. The rates are as follows. Resident student admission, $1. Resident skate rental, $1. Non-resident student admission, $3. Non-resident skate rental, $2.50. Skate rental fees are still in effect for all skaters. Please remember for your safety, as well as others, any type of mask that restricts your vision while skating is prohibited. Costume accessories such as toy guns, knives, sickles, axes, and so forth are prohibited. There will be $1 hot dogs and pretzels. Learn to skate registration for winter session begins October 28th. Rates are as follows. Residents, $47. Non-residents, $62. Parma Heights, $54. These rates include the USFS fees. Classes for the eight-week program begin November 11th. Christmas figure skating exhibition will be held on Friday, December 18th, at 6:30 PM. The Brooklyn Rec Center is currently looking for participants for the fall and winter lifeguarding classes. Participants must be 15 years of age. Resident cost is $165. Non-resident cost is $175. Please contact Ashley at abutler@brooklynohio.gov for more information. The Rec Center is offering the following fall classes. Yoga. This class is for all levels and offers a fitness-based approach to Vinyasa-style flow yoga. Classes are held on Tuesdays and Thursdays from 7 to 8:00 PM. Rates are resident $4, Parma Heights $5, non-resident $6. Water aerobics offers a variety of classes including Silver Sneaker, Splash, and Deep Fitness, Deep Water Fitness. Classes are offered six days a week in both the morning and evening. Please call or visit the Rec Center for schedule. Resident $4, Parma Heights $5, non-resident $6. Classes are free to Silver Sneaker members. Jazzercise classes are offered four days a week. Call or visit the Rec Center for schedule. One-time $20 joining fee and $36 for unlimited month. If you are a working senior or mature adult, the Rec Center is offering a gentle yoga class on Saturdays at 10:30 AM. This yoga class is designed to move your whole body through a complete series of seated and standing yoga posts. Chair support is offered to safely perform a variety of postures designed to increase flexibility, balance, and range of movement. Breathing exercises promote stress reduction and mental clarity. Silver Sneaker members, recreation month and yearly pass holders are free. Recreation Center ID holders pay $1 per class. All walk-in participants are $3. If you are interested in the class, please let the front desk know. Holiday events and closings are as follows. October 30th, the Hallow Scream Skate, 8 to 9:15 PM. October 31st, the Halloween Pool closes at 5:00 PM. November 26th, Thanksgiving Day closed. December 6th, Skate with Santa, from 2:45 to 3:45 PM. December 24th, Christmas Eve, building closes at 3:00 PM. December 25th, Christmas Day closed. December 31st, New Year's Eve, building closes at 3:00 PM. January 1st, 2016, New Year's Day closed. The next Recreation Board meeting will be held on November 16th in the Rec Center Meeting Room at 7:00 PM. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Next up is our legislative updates, and that's Councilwoman Bellbeer.
Thank you. There's just a couple of issues I'd like to go over. The superintendent also mentioned Issue 6, of course, and that's, that's a very important issue to my heart here. So Issue 6 is additional funding for the Polaris Career Center. It is the first time in 31 years funding for Polaris will be on the ballot. It is a .69 mil permanent improvement issue. Among other things, Polaris provides advanced training with college credit and professional certification for young students and older adults alike. The .69 mil is about $25 to $30 a year for a house valued in the $100,000 range. So please consider that, that issue. Issue 8 is the arts and culture issue. This involves the renewal of 30 cents a pack, a cigarette tax that was first levied in 2006. There is no new tax, it's simply keeping the tax cigarette smokers have been paying for the last 10 years. Our arts and culture sector employs thousands of people. It produces hundreds of millions of dollars in a direct economy activity and plays a leading role in attracting millions of visitors to our region. Of course, now, the most controversial issue on the ballot are Issues 2 and 3. I mentioned this last meeting, but it's certainly worth commenting on again. Briefly, Issue 3 is asking voters to approve a constitutional amendment that would authorize 10 particular sites for the wholesale growing of marijuana, and in effect identifies the groups and individuals who would have the sole right under the Constitution of Ohio to run these operations. Opposition to Issue 3 is not necessarily against the legalization of pot. Many feel there is a need for change, but not in the manner proposed by Issue 3 backers. Constitutionally giving 10 investment groups sole privilege to have a monopoly on growing pot does not sell well with the average citizen. It seems like selected millionaires are being given the opportunity to get even richer. Issue 3 would authorize the setting up of over 1,100 retail shops that these growers would be supplying. Amazingly, that's more pot stores than there are McDonald's in the state of Ohio, and more pot stores than there are Starbucks in the state of Ohio, and three times more than the number of state liquor stores. Issue 2 does not mention marijuana, but it would greatly affect the outcome of Issue 3. Issue 2 is a proposed constitutional amendment that in effect forbids any constitutional amendment that creates monopolies for economic benefit, such as the exclusive business rights authorized by Issue 3. The core reasoning behind Issue 2 is that the state constitution should be a statement of basic rights and principles, not a tool for rich individuals and special interests to get richer by having privileges unavailable to other Ohioans. Please give these issues your full attention, and that concludes my report.
Thank you. The Planning Commission will meet Thursday, November 5th, at 6:00 PM in the Brooklyn City Hall Conference Room. We will hear a request from all signs and designs to install a freestanding illuminated monument sign for business identification of Arrow International located at 9900 Clinton Road, Permanent Parcel 43101004. Next up, we will hear from our School Board Liaison and Public Works Chair, Councilwoman Tansky. I mean, I'm sorry, is that hard?
Thank you. Last week, Mr. Courtney, who is our City Engineer, Mr. Verba, the Service Director, and myself went out and evaluated the streets for 2016 to be done. A list will be provided to council in the next several weeks that we can continue to get a jump on going out to bid and try to save some money. We also started, discussed starting a crack filling program for the streets. This is something that was done in the past years but has not been done in recent past history. This should help preserve, preserve our streets. An investment of $50,000 in material was mentioned as a good starting point that will cover a number of streets. The automated leaf truck was delivered this morning to the service garage. That concludes my Public Works report. The Brooklyn City Board of Education held its regular monthly meeting Tuesday, October 20th, at 6:00 PM in Room 173 at Brooklyn High School. The meeting started off with a musical presentation by several members of the high school jazz ensemble, with the director, Mr. Sean Sullivan, participating along on the saxophone. This was done to recognize the 50th anniversary of Elvis playing at the high school, along with Bill Haley and the Comets, Pat Boone, the Four Lads, and Elvis Presley finishing out the show. Later in the meeting, the board approved a recognition by the superintendent for this event. Mr. John Gerald from the Brooklyn Historical Society was also at the meeting and provided us all with a firsthand account of being at the concert and the red coat that Elvis wore, and how several students later that year had the same type of red coat on at the prom. There was also a presentation by three students about the school getting a grant and working with NEOMED. NEOMED is the Northeast Ohio Medical University. The grant will enable students at the high school to work with first-year medical and pharmaceutical students. The first-year students will be able to mentor with the high school students and help them with leadership skills while performing, preparing for careers in the medical field. Dr. Gleikoff also acknowledged a family and consumer science teacher, Mrs. Michelle Hirsch. She was recognized by the Ohio House of Representatives as being one of only 34 niche teachers nationwide completing a food service training program. Mrs. Hirsch completed a program this past summer. The board also passed a number of other items at the meeting, which included modifying policy number 5460 to reflect, reflect the change to the current high school graduate requirement of one fine arts credit. The board also approved, in agreement with Umbudsman Educational Services Limited, Umbudsman provides the district an off-campus program intended to reduce dropout rates, increase graduation rates, increase attendance levels, increase, improve academic performance for dropout prevention, and offer the district's non-traditional learners a new opportunity to encounter a personalized learning experience different than they encountered in an traditional school setting. The board also approved supplemental teaching and coaching assignments, as well as an agreement with the Cleveland Clinic Center for Autism. The five-year forecast for fiscal 2016 was presented by the Treasurer, Mr. Todd Hopkins. He pointed out that the focus is not on expenses but revenue. For every 1% that the collection rate improves for real estate taxes collected by the county, that's an additional $100,000 to the schools. The forecasted unreserved balances for June 30th for the year ending 2016 is positive $2,820,000. 2017 is slightly over $2,000,000. 2018 is $728,000. 2019 is a negative $980,000. And for the year 2020, it is a negative $3.1 million. For other agenda items discussed and voted upon this meeting and any other meeting, please go to the school system's website and click on the Board of Education tab and then on the Board Docs tab. This Wednesday, October 28th, Dr. Gleikoff will be holding sessions where residents can come in and sit down and talk with him. This will take place from 5:00 PM to 8:00 PM. Please call 216-485-8100 for details and appointment times. You also heard about the Polaris Open House this Wednesday from 6:00 to 8:00 PM. Another upcoming event will be a fundraiser at BW3 on Wednesday, November 4th, from 4:00 to 9:00 PM. Please contact the high school football team or the athletics department. You need to get a yellow voucher from them. 20% of your pre-taxed food sales will be given as a donation back to the football team. The next board meeting is Tuesday, November 17th, in Room 173 at 6:00 PM. Public is welcome and encouraged to attend as your school system for your children. That concludes my report.
Thank you. We will now move on to reports at council, and first up tonight is Tony DiMarco.
I have no reports this evening.
Thank you. Next up is Ron Van Kirk.
Thank you. Just a couple of things. First of all, thank you, Mrs. Bellbeer, again, for the explanation on that. Just, I've done some research on this as well, and this, Issue 3, the more you dig into it, the more it's, it's, it's not a good idea. Obviously, I encourage residents to look at themselves, but beyond what she said, all the stuff she said is true, beyond that, they also are going to have testing facilities that'll be located at colleges in various counties, and Cuyahoga County is one of them. They're going to have testing facilities for that, and they can choose to expand that pretty much whenever they want. Beyond that, it very, it's, right in the constitutional amendment, it very much limits the authority that local municipalities have on legislating these things. When a store wants to be open, it goes to the electors, the voters, to decide on it, but the, like, council and the local legislators really, they're restricted by the constitutional amendment from, from legislating anything when it comes to these things. It's, you know, we're not even talking about marijuana here, as far as the issue goes. The issue is a constitutional issue, and it's, it's a bad deal for the residents of Brooklyn, it's a bad deal for residents of Ohio. We can certainly have the discussion about medicinal marijuana in the future, but this is not the correct way of doing it, at least in my opinion, and I would really strongly encourage residents to look at it. Issue 2, if, if Issue 2 passes and Issue 3 passes, we're going to have a mess, because then it's going to end up in the court system, and they're going to duke it out for that, and it's going to take up years and cost taxpayers a lot of money to figure out exactly what, which one is legal and which one's not. And so do do your research on that, and thank you, Mrs. Bell, for that very thorough explanation. It's just not a good deal. There is also one other thing, one other amendment or issue that she didn't mention is Issue 1, that's on the ballot, and if you live in the state of Ohio, it's on there, and that is the way that the lines are drawn for the 99 House districts and the 33 Senate districts that are done here in the state of Ohio. Currently, that is done by the legislature. And whatever party controls the legislature, they basically determine how the districts are drawn. Constitutional amendment that's proposed on Issue 1 would make it a bipartisan panel that would draw those districts, and it requires public hearings to be held, it requires a vote, at least two, a two-vote from the minority party to approve that, and if they can't come to a consensus, a temporary one is drawn, and then it's, and then it's reconvened at a later time. So it's a more fair way of, at least in my opinion, a more fair way of drawing up those districts, so it's less partisan. And so that's Issue 1. There's also a, Issue 9 is an amendment for the Cuyahoga County Charter, and you can do the research on that as well, but thank you again, Mrs. Bellbeer, for that. Some very important issues that are on there, and you don't hear a lot about them in the news, and so it really behooves residents to do their research to make sure they understand that. On a little bit of a lighter note, I was able to attend the last Brooklyn football game. I had, finally had a free Friday night, and I was able to go there on Friday, and it was, it was a fantastic game. Again, I always say this, but the bands, actually from both schools, were very, very good, both from Oberlin and from Brooklyn, but Brooklyn's just fantastic. And they actually did a raffle at the football game, and if you won it, the band is going to come to your front yard and play the entire halftime show, and I believe it's this Friday. I believe a resident over on Springwood, I believe, won that. So if you're in that area, if you're in that neighborhood over on Friday, it's very loud, that's because the entire Brooklyn marching band will be on the street playing their entire halftime show before they head on over to the, to the game, I believe it's against Columbia, where it's an away game this week. So football team almost won the, Oberlin won in the last second, or last second play, but it was a great time, and I really enjoyed watching the football team, and of course, the band was always fantastic. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Kathy Pucci.
Thank you. I would just like to add that I also attended several of the home games for the football team this fall, and I know that the, it was pretty discouraging for the members of the team. I think I mentioned at a couple, or, excuse me, at- I think I mentioned at a couple, or, excuse me, at a previous meeting that we don't have a lot of students, so our students who are playing football are basically playing the whole game, offense and defense, so it's really tough, and I give all these young men, you know, kudos for hanging in there in some very tough situations. And also, I don't think our band is second to anyone. They put on a phenomenal halftime show, and I'm sure the resident who won that raffle is going to be thrilled. I'm going to avoid being redundant, but I did just want to mention a couple things from the school board meeting I also attend, attended, and the concert, or the little mini concert at the beginning was just awesome, and it was 60 years that the Elvis performed for the first time north of the Mason Dixon Line in the auditorium at our own Brooklyn High School. The NEOMED grant, this is a tremendous opportunity for our students. The school set out quite a number of years ago to aggressively seek outside funding to provide extra programs and services for our students, and they've done an outstanding job doing this, and the mentoring and the training and leadership that our students are going to be able to be exposed to through this partnership with NEOMED is just really amazing. So, my compliments to the schools for continuing in aggressively seeking those grants. And also, congratulations to Michelle Hirsch, she's a friend of mine, and she is a very dedicated teacher to each and every one of the students that she teaches, and this is, was a very nice recognition for her efforts. Safe routes to school. We have a meeting tomorrow, Tuesday, October 27th, at 7:30 in the conference room at the New Elementary School. I would like to thank the Gallagher family and other senior staff members of Arrow International. They invited members of the Economic Development Committee over for a presentation and a tour of their facility last week. Myself, Mr. Enavich, Mrs. Miglerino, and also our citizen member of the committee, Debbie Tomusko, went. We had provided them with a job retention and job creation grant. They are almost finished with their expansion, and it was very impressive. We had a presentation on the company, both a little bit of history, where they are now, some plans for their future. They have already fulfilled ahead of time the number of jobs that they said that they were going to create, and might be some other good news in the future as far as that goes. It's very impressive, and they have always felt since they came here that they were an important part of the community, and they always liked the fact that the values that we had in Brooklyn mirrored their values as far as the taxes that they pay, the taxes that their employees pay, have gone to provide services above and beyond what other communities can provide their residents, and that was always something that was very important to them. So I would like to thank them for their hospitality, and also thank them for their presence in our community and their commitment to staying here in the future. We already mentioned Polaris, but I would like to encourage everyone to please support this very important levy. It's a very modest increase, it's already been mentioned that this is the first time in 31 years. We have an awful lot of students in our community who are benefiting from Polaris. This is critical for our students. Not all students go to college, and this provides them with basically exposure and access to award-winning programs in a wide variety of career choices, so please support that. Mr. Tengary, thank you for reminding everybody to vote, and also about Halloween safety. Please be careful if you're out that night. We do have extra police officers out, and usually we've got the fire department out on the streets too, but please be very cautious of our young children. And Mr. Bradley, I'm sorry to hear the problems you're having, I hope, you know, we can get them resolved, and congratulations to your son on being Middle School Student of the Month. And that completes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Mary Bellbeer.
Thank you. I never get a chance to go to the football game, I'm usually working on Friday nights, but I do get a chance to hear them when they're practicing on Wednesday night, and yes, they do sound fabulous, and under the direction of Sean Sullivan, who is a wonderful band director, it's just fabulous, so I'm very proud of our Brooklyn High School band. On behalf of myself and my family, the Sokolowski family, it was a pleasure to donate our services over here at the Brooklyn Center when we had our Oktoberfest on Saturday. There were roughly 150 guests, food was good, I think everybody had a good time, and it was a pleasure to be there. I'd also like to congratulate our school on the chance and opportunity for these students to go to NEOMED. I do know a little bit about NEOMED, my daughter attends the medical school there, and she oftentimes says, gee, Mom, I wish I would have known about this pharmacy program a little earlier, could have taken classes in high school, but at that time, it wasn't available to her. So, congratulations to our students that are able to attend such a wonderful, wonderful school, and that concludes my report.
Thank you. Next up is Kevin Tansky.
Thank you. I would like to thank Council President Katie Gallagher, committee members Mary Jo Banis, Jill Ludwig, Councilman Andy Selhertz, Barb and Dave Steppich, for the wonderful job they did at the Brooklyn's Fall Festival at the Memorial Park. It was nice seeing all the residents who came out and had a good time. Council President Gallagher, I was told by many residents that this event was long overdue, so again, job well done, and that concludes my report.
Thank you. Next up, Andy Selhertz.
Thank you. This Wednesday, the judges will be out in the evening from about 7:00 to 9:00 PM to view homes decorated for Halloween. Winners will be posted by the city on Friday, October 30th, so that people can have an opportunity to enjoy the views. As other people have mentioned, please support Polaris. I know budgets in some homes are from paycheck to paycheck, and they're tight, but if you can afford to vote yes, please do so. It's a good investment in your community and in your future. Just to remind the audience here and at home, something else that's being worked on with the Service Department, it's called the LeBri Minimax. On Thursday, May 30th, the Public Works Committee was, meeting was held at 4:00 PM at City Hall. We did discuss to look at the purchase of an additional automated refuse truck made by LeBri called the Minimax. We will be waiting for the next one to be coming off this production line for a demo in our town to see if it does fit our needs. This truck is about half the size of current vehicles, and it has only a 14-yard capacity as compared to the current 30 or 33-yard capacity. The idea behind this vehicle is to be used for areas where the tipper trucks are needed because the current automated vehicles are too large. The new vehicle could also serve as a backup when either one of the large two is down for repair. From the September 14th council meeting, the following was mentioned from my council report as well. Also, the following week, the Service Department had the opportunity to test drive a LeBri Minimax. It is a small, smaller version of the automated trash collection trucks than the city currently has two of. It did fit going through the Brook, streets in Brooklyn Acres, as well as some other tighter fits where the larger trucks cannot maneuver. The only drawback was that the arm on the truck was malfunctioning, so a true rubber hits the road was not a possible test. The purpose of looking into this vehicle is to do areas where the larger trucks cannot service as well as act as a backup to the two existing units. The Service Department, as mentioned, is in need of a backup, and this would serve that purpose, and all at the same time improve the efficiency in the delivery of trash removal. In talking with Mr. Verba since and reviewing the specifications of this vehicle, this will be brought before council within the next few meetings, since lead time from ordering a vehicle to delivery is usually around nine months. This may be contrary to some of the statements that are being currently circulated. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Just like to give a few reminders, Saturday, Halloween, at 2:00, the Friends of the Brooklyn Library will have a pumpkin party. You can come dress in costumes, and they're going to have stories, crafts, and fall refreshments. Trick-or-treating in the city of Brooklyn is going to be held from 6:00 to 8:00 PM. Also, remind everyone that we'll have the annual Thanksgiving Food Drive along with St. Thomas More Church. The city collects Thanksgiving meal-related foods such as potatoes, cranberry stuffing, vegetables. You can drop off your donations here at City Hall from now until November 20th, between 8:00 AM and 4:00 PM. Also, reminder, snow is coming pretty soon, so our snow ban parking is in effect November 1st, from 2:00 AM to 7:00 AM. Also, tonight on the agenda, we have our annual medical insurance, and thankfully, our rates did not go up, we decreased a little bit, but each year, the State Employment Relations Board puts out an annual report, they, they send surveys out to all of the government agencies to see where, where they rank. If you do a comparison for us, you would compare us to those cities with a population under 25,000, and right now, we're, for an employee only, our cost is $604, if you complete that to the average, and the state is $559, and for families, for us, it's 1,752, and the average for the state is 1,509. So we're right on par with everybody else in the state. Additionally, they show a comparison of the employee contribution. In our city, our employee contribution is 10.5%. Average around the state for a, a single employee is 10.8%, and for a family is 11.6. So again, we're on par, and, you know, just like you, this is probably one of the things that our employees value the most is, is affordable healthcare, so it's great that we can keep the rates the same. Lastly, I'd like to, I wonder if Ms. Miglerino, since you're in the audience, if there's any kind of update you can give on IKEA, is there, if there's anything you could say? No?
Really? There's nothing I can hear.
Okay. And that is it, I'll move on to the mayor's report.
Thank you. The Cleveland Water Department notified us, and I believe it was also in the Plain Dealer, that our rates will not go up for the next three years, whether they're on a five-year plan. In the last two years, 2019 and 2020, there'll be small increases, so that's good news. I would also like to give credit to our councilwoman, Mary Bellbeer, who put on the, a dinner at the Senior Center on Saturday, October 17th. It was sold out, and everyone raved about the food, it was an excellent affair. I received notice this week that the, our applications for the 2015 COPS grant was turned down, but we'll keep trying. And everyone's mentioned that Halloween is this Saturday, so put on your porch light, and it'll be between 6:00 and 8:00 PM. And also, everyone's mentioned about voting, it's a week from tomorrow, and it's an important vote, you're picking a new mayor and three councilmen, so if you can vote, get out there. And just before I left this afternoon, the Historical Society asked me to mention, on Wednesday, October 28th, at 7:00 PM, they'll have an expert there giving a presentation on Purdus Springs Park. And for the younger people, Purdus Springs Park was an amusement park that was at the end of Purdus Road, just before you go into Cuyahoga Valley there, the metro parks, and it was very popular. Well, this gentleman's going to give a talk on it, and he also has many books that he has written on it that'll be for sale, and it says, "All are welcome, refreshments to follow," and that's all I have.
Thank you. Moving on to directors' reports, the only one we have tonight is our Finance Director, Dan Enavich.
Thank you, Council President Gallagher. I will be brief. Our unencumbered balance in the general fund today is $12,552,651.31. The city's total cash balance is $22,889,543.11. Our total general fund year-to-day revenues of $16,401,358.17 exceed our year-to-date general fund expenses of $13,170,292.34. And also, I'd like to mention, since we talk about capital improvements, our capital improvements expenditures outside of the general fund year-to-date are $2,941,175.63, and that concludes my report.
Thank you. Next, we have a liquor permit transfer request from El Toteca Mexican Grill to Plaza Grande Mexican Grill.
May I ask a question?
Yes.
Do, do we know, they, it's the same person, right, but they just had a change in the name?
I don't know.
I, I believe so. Chief Milk, he didn't tell me he had any objections or anything.
For a position of no objection?
Second.
For no objection, Tony DiMarco?
Yes.
Ron Van Kirk?
Stand.
Kathy Pucci?
Yes.
Mary Bellbeer?
Yes.
Kevin Tansky?
Yes.
Andy Selhertz?
Yes.
Katie Gallagher?
Yes.
Next, we have a request to approve a change order relating to the landfill closure project. Again, that amount is $33,374.62.
Move to approve the change orders?
Second.
To approve, Tony DiMarco?
Yes.
Ron Van Kirk?
Yes.
Kathy Pucci?
Yes.
Mary Bellbeer?
Yes.
Kevin Tansky?
Yes.
Andy Selhertz?
Yes.
Katie Gallagher?
Yes.
Moving on to legislation, Resolution 2015-7, approving the application of the city of Brooklyn to upgrade its 2006 master plan using community development block grant funds.
Introduce by all suspend the rules?
Second.
To suspend the rules, Tony DiMarco?
Yes.
Ron Van Kirk?
Yes.
Kathy Pucci?
Yes.
Mary Bellbeer?
Yes.
Kevin Tansky?
Yes.
Andy Selhertz?
Yes.
Katie Gallagher?
Yes.
Resolution 2015-8, accepting the improvement target areas as designated by the county and approving the application for upgrading the city of Brooklyn's parks and recreation areas to be funded under the Community Development Block Grant Program.
Introduce by all suspend the rules?
Second.
To suspend the rules, Tony DiMarco?
Yes.
Ron Van Kirk?
Yes.
Kathy Pucci?
Yes.
Mary Bellbeer?
Yes.
Kevin Tansky?
Yes.
Andy Selhertz?
Yes.
Katie Gallagher?
Yes.
To adopt by emergency, Tony DiMarco?
Yes.
Ron Van Kirk?
Yes.
Kathy Pucci?
Yes.
Mary Bellbeer?
Yes.
Kevin Tansky?
Yes.
Andy Selhertz?
Yes.
Katie Gallagher?
Yes.
Resolution 2015-9, authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with James G. Zepka CPA Incorporated to provide services to the city of Brooklyn. This is on second reading.
May I be recognized?
Yes.
I move that we amend the ordinance in the fourth whereas, after the amount $17,290 that we add...
Do you want to wait on the amendment and to clarify if you want to change it to an ordinance or no? Are we going to stick with the resolution?
Um, that's fine. I, I thought we clarified it.
I didn't.
Okay.
I didn't know.
That's fine, we can wait.
Resolution 2015-10, authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with the District Board of Health of Cuyahoga County for health services for the year 2016. This is on second reading. Ordinance 2015-55, enacting new section 549 dot 14 possessing certain weapons at or public places of the codified ordinances of the city of Brooklyn, Ohio.
Do we know if the chief wants this effective right away?
Um, I'm sure he does.
Okay. I move we adopt by emergency measure?
Second.
To adopt by emergency, Tony DiMarco?
Yes.
Ron Van Kirk?
Yes.
Kathy Pucci?
Yes.
Mary Bellbeer?
Yes.
Kevin Tansky?
Yes.
Andy Selhertz?
Yes.
Katie Gallagher?
Yes.
Ordinance 2015-60, to adopt new chapter 182 income tax, January 1st, 2016, of the codified ordinances of the city of Brooklyn, Ohio. This is on second reading. Ordinance 2015-62, amending ordinance 2015-38, providing for the compensation for the full, part-time, full-time, and administrative employees, non-bargaining agreement of the city of Brooklyn, Ohio. This is on first reading. Ordinance 2015-63, authorizing the sale of certain city-owned vehicles through the Greater Cleveland Auto Auction, public auctioneers, for the purpose of disposing of city vehicles at public sale. This is on first reading. Ordinance 2015-64, accepting the medical insurance renewal from Medical Mutual of Ohio, providing medical insurance coverage for eligible employees from December 1st, 2015, to November 30th, 2016. This is on first reading.
May I be recognized for one second, please?
Yes.
Um, just for the record, Resolution 2015-7 and 8, the reason we pass those by emergency is because of a timing issue, those have to be, the CDBG grant funds have, the, the application has to be turned in a timely manner, would not allow for a third reading.
Just remind everyone, the next council meeting is Monday, November 9th. Does any of the directors, anybody in council have anything they'd like to add?
May I be recognized?
Yes.